Good evening. At this time, our November 10th, 2014 meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission will come to order. If y'all will stand with us for our prayer and our pledge, please. Will you bow with us? Our Father in Heaven, Lord, we're thankful for this day. And as we enter this season of Thanksgiving, may we truly be mindful of the many blessings of life that we have living in a county like Rutherford County. Bless this county, bless this state, and bless America. God be with those that are overseas fighting for our freedom, watch over them, and bring them home safe. Be with this committee as we do the work of the county, and may it be in the best interest of all citizens in cotton name we play. Amen. Would you face the flag, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. Call the road, please, Gal.
Rhonda Allen. Jim Averywater. Veronica Buchanan. Will Jordan. Mike Kush. Craig Lynch. Chip Pinion. Charlotte P. Steve Sandlin. Mike Vaught. Jeff Phillips.
Right.
Have a corn.
At this time, we need to approve our October 27th minute. I'll call on our vice chair, Craig Lynch. Do we have a motion to approve?
I would say that motion.
And a second. All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye. No motion carries. I'd like to just take one minute and recognize a long-term leader of our community and our county, and a long-term member of this planning commission, Robert Stroop. Robert, welcome tonight. Thank you for being here, and thank you for the service to our county. I appreciate you, bud. You also have in front of you a copy of the building codes report if you'll want to take a second to look at that and ask any questions or ask any questions later. While you're doing that, we have two items that have been withdrawn. Looks like item 6A, number 14-1010, a preliminary plan has been withdrawn, and item 7A, 14-2071, a final plat has been withdrawn. We will not be discussing those tonight. Moving on, item number eight submitted for site plan approval. Item 8A, rated, the item number is 14-3022, alternate landscape plan on 13.6 acres, zoned light industrial, located at 315 Murfreesboro Street. Robert Stroop is the applicant. This site plan was originally approved at the September 22nd meeting. Doug?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. As he said, this property should be familiar to the commission. It's located at the intersection of John Bragg Highway and Murfreesboro Street. Again, the applicant, just for a matter of review, the applicant is proposing to construct 20,000 square foot building on the property south of the existing building that's already there. This, again, was approved back in September. Since that time, staff has had some conversations with the applicant regarding the landscape plan. You should have a copy of that plan on your table. Before I go into that, I have a copy of that up here I'm going to show. But just to give you an idea, the issues that the applicant is running into, as you recall, and you can see it on the plan, there's a TVA line and a fairly large TVA easement, think about 150-foot total easement, that kind of cuts right through the middle of the parking lot. And the buffer area around the parking lot is going to be right in that middle of that TVA easement. Now, because of that easement being there, you know, they're a little limited as to the plantings that they can plant there due to the TVA line. So what the applicant is asking is to do an alternate landscape plan, which is allowed under our regulations. It has to be done by a landscape architect, which this has been done. And they're proposing a little bit different type layout, which I'll let the applicant who's present, and he'll speak to that here in just a minute. But just to give you an idea, they'd like to do some alternate-type plantings in that easement, and also keep a lot of the existing vegetation on the property. And you can see, this is just some examples that the applicant provided of the existing vegetation that's going to remain. You can kind of see where the, well, you can see where the line is. And you can see around it, the, just the amount of plantings that are there. They're really going to leave a lot of that undisturbed. As far as I'm concerned, a lot of that being undisturbed, I mean, that can count as existing tree credits as far as our purposes are concerned for it. But I want to bring up the landscape plan here just to make sure we're clear on the area we're talking about here. Okay, let me just rotate this here. Yeah, okay. This is the area in question, right through here. And you can see, this is the TVA easement right through, this area right through here, cuts right down the middle of the parking lot. This would be the area in question that they want to just do a little bit different type arrangement in this area. Again, consistent with what TVA will allow them to do. All this area up through here, those were some of those pictures that I just showed you up in this area, kind of showed you the existing vegetation that's going to remain undisturbed. As far as the rest of the landscape plan around here, it's, and it's difficult to see at this scale, but there's quite a bit of plantings around there and the rest of the parking area that we're fine with. It's really just this area right through here. Mr. Clyde Roundtree is present. He's the landscape architect that worked on the plan and has spoken with staff about it. Robert Stroop, as Mr. Chairman had already pointed out, is present as well, and will be happy to answer any questions that you may have. And just so you know, the rest of the site, the only thing we're looking at tonight is the plan, the landscape plan, and everything else is the same in that regard. Well, he's, again, he's allowed to make the application under the provision in the zoning ordinance that allows for an alternate plan in situations, this is the whole reason we put this provision in the ordinance, was for this reason. If you do move to approve this, my only concern, really, is that what they submit also be submitted to TVA for their review, because if they submit something and TVA doesn't like it, then they're just going to have to go back to the drawing board, anyway. So any approval should just be conditioned upon TVA also signing off on the landscape plan. And we'll work with the applicant, again, as far as the materials and things concerned. But it's really just this area around the parking lot that's a concern. Everything else there, I feel pretty comfortable with.
Staff recommendation?
With that, I mean, I'd recommend approval, provided it's conditioned upon TVA review and approval as well.
Motion to approve with TVA approval, I believe?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
That's fine. Yes, sir. That'd be fine.
Any other questions? For the motion to approve, please say aye. Any opposition, motion carries. Zoning request in public hearings, item number 9A, South Haven Development. The item number is 14-A013. Location, Ocala Road. County Commissioner is Trey Gooch. Size of the site is approximately 262 acres. Tax map, 94 parcels on number 1.01, and 34.077 parcels on 66, I'm sorry, 62.0, 64.0, and 64, 76 parcels on 39.03 and 39.02, which is also a portion of that. Existing zoning is RM. Proposed zoning is planned unit development. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. As you stated, this property, or these properties, really, it's a lot more than one, are located along Ocala Road. This may look familiar to some of the planning commissioners here. A good number of you were on the commission when this first came through, back in 2007. This was originally an approval that was known as Cedar Brook back in 2007. The original development contained about 430 lots. Approval was granted as a conditional use permit for a planned residential development. It contained a mixture of both single-family and attached-in-detached type units. However, not too long after that, it's really when the economic downturn hit, so they never submitted any plats. I don't think, they've never, never turned a blade of dirt or anything. So because of that, excuse me, the application, sorry, excuse me, the, the application has long since lapsed at that point. When this was rezoned back in 2013, when we went to our new ordinance, we just simply put it as RM, similar to the land around it, and it was R15 at the time. Well, this approval, or this application is coming before you now. It's a little bigger than what it was in the past. And I will say that the, making the map for this was a little, was a little challenging. This is showing all the parcels in effect. There's actually an area right in here that's not part of the rezoning. That'll be reflected if this gets to the county commission level and in the resolution for approval. But it was just, we were having, it was just easier to make the map look like this, but this gives you the general area that we're looking at over here on Ocala Road. But the applicant now is proposing 618 lots. It's more lots than originally approved at the 430. It's also, the size of it's a little larger than originally proposed. It was 218 acres originally, but now it's 262 acres. They are still showing a significant amount of open space on the property. They're showing a lot of, like, walking trails and different things like that, but a lot of just open area. There's a creek, kind of an unnamed tributary that runs through there, and they're showing a lot of that to be conserved for open space. There were quite a few comments that we had on this application. One of them, dealing with the open space, really had to do with better calculation, something we discussed in the past as far as better phasing of the application, showing what it's going to be in what phases. They have done a better job of that in this application. You do have a copy of the full booklet on your tables, as well as, there was a copy that was emailed to you prior to the meeting. The applicant is present. I think they're going to go through some of that here in just a couple of minutes. Most of our comments have been addressed. There were some other items that we're going to go into a little more depth about. I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Mike Hughes, our county engineer, to talk about the traffic in the area, traffic improvements, as well as some of the drainage issues in that area.
Thank you, Doug. The stormwater comments we had were to show, excuse me, the stormwater management areas in each phase, and they've done that. There's a large unnamed tributary to Stewart's Creek. It's got about a 1.5 square mile drainage basin flowing north to, excuse me, south to north through the property. And they're large triple box culverts, 12-foot wide by 8-foot high, so three barrels running underneath 840 and also Ocala. And we'd asked them to revisit the multiple crossings of the walking trail, and they've, they've done that. We didn't want to cause a hindrance to the flow through the development. And then also, this large tributary has a floodplain with it, and we'd asked them to show us a little bit better the floodplain limits, and they've, they've done that, and all the lots are outside of the floodplains, which is good. That was all the stormwater comments, and they've addressed those. Infrastructure, they, they've had a traffic study performed, and it's come up with several recommendations. One of them is, is have a, a southbound left-turn lane on Alma Ville onto Old Shores, a northbound right-turn lane onto Old Shores, and then also widen Old Shores with 300-foot of storage of two lanes going out west and, and, yeah, two westbound lanes going out. And they, they've, they've agreed to that. And they're also going to straighten up Old Shores intersection. It's kind of at a Y right now. They need to straighten that out to a T, and that's, that's one of the things they're going to do. These, all these improvements are recommended to take place in the initial phase of the development. But as the development grows, later on, when it gets close to 75 and 100%, they're going to do a traffic signal warrant analysis and see if, if they need to bring in a, have this new intersection signalized. That was all that was mentioned on the traffic study. Doug and I went out and looked at the, the Old Shores and, and Ocala, and right now, Old Shores is, is pretty narrow in places. It's got 17 to 18 feet, some with no shoulders, and it's got a sight distance issues as you make that little curve. So we're wanting them to look at widening Old Shores from their listed improvements all the way back to Ocala, just to look and see if we can improve this whole section of road, because we've got so much traffic flowing through there. Once you get to Ocala, Ocala's a pretty good shape. It's two 11-foot lanes, pretty wide, wide shoulders on it. But we do want to have some improvements made to the Ocala and Old Shores intersection. We need some restriping, need a new stop sign out there, and some clear zone improvements. There's some culverts that might cause some issues. We want them to look at that, too, when they get to construction plans. But with this many, there's a lot, a lot of cars that would, would be generated by this development. So we, we feel that this is important, that they make these improvements. And that's all I had right now.
Just a couple of other things I wanted to mention, just briefly. There was a neighborhood meeting that was had on this prop, or for this project last week. Mr. Matt Taylor with SEC was in attendance at that. There was none, no one from staff was in attendance, but he'll be able to give you a better idea. I think some of the folks who are here tonight may have been at that meeting. The other thing was, we have received a, a call from Consolidated Utility about the lot widths. You'll recall that we've had this discussion in the past regarding the, the widths of lots and planned developments, where if they're getting a little too narrow, it becomes more difficult to place the septic tank for the step systems on the lots. From a depth standpoint, I think they're in pretty good shape, and from a setback standpoint, they're okay. But I think there's some concern from Consolidated Utility on their proposed minimum width is 50 feet. I think they'd like to see something more on the lines of 65 feet. But we've contacted CUD, or, I'm sorry, SEC about this as well, and I think they're going to, I think there's going to be a little bit of, of maybe negotiation on that part, see if they can come up with a solution on that. I don't think that's going to affect, regardless of the outcome, I don't think that's going to affect the layout of the subdivision that you're looking at very much. That's from the layout of the roads. Now, you may, they may end up having to lose a lot or two here or there, but that's, wanted to bring that to your attention as well. And on the, on the screens, I'll start over at the beginning here, just to give you an idea. Okay. This is looking down Ocala Road. That'd be to the east, or I think that was to the west, actually. This would be looking across the way. That's looking to the east. This would be looking onto the property. It's hard, I mean, this is a large piece of, several pieces of property, so, I mean, this, this isn't necessarily indicative of what it all looks like, but this is a good idea. This is a portion of Shores Road. Actually, if you look at, this is actually Ocala Road, is that coming up? Yeah, Ocala Road right here. And you can see that there's really no traffic directional signs or any kind of stop signage or anything like that. That's what Mr. Hughes was talking about a moment ago. And this is going, if you took the road here, you'd be going back toward Alma Ville Road. And this is kind of looking in that other direction. You can see that curve right through there. So just to give you an idea of what we're looking at.
Mike mentioned a traffic warrant, signalization warrant study at some point of completion of the houses. Who would be responsible for the cost of that light if it was warranted? I mean, could we come in at that point in time? It was 75% buildout, probably seven or eight years down the road, best-case scenario.
Right. We, we would ask the developer to take care of that, and at about the 75% completion rate.
I assume that we're under new ownership on this property then, from when it came to us before, or?
Well, actually, I don't, the gentleman that I've been speaking to about it is the same one that represented him back in the, back at the time.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Now, Mr. Taylor is, is standing up. He's, I think he's probably more familiar with the, the development team entirely, but I know the, one of the names on the materials is the same one I've been dealing with, so.
Matt Taylor of SEC. There's a, Mr. Jim Hyson, I think, was the primary contact you probably saw at, under the old Cedar Brook name. He is still part of the development team, but the South Haven Development is made up of himself, Mr. Ken Green, and Mr. Bob Parks are the primary development team there.
Since this approval, what was it, what year did you say it was?
2007.
2007.
Yes, sir.
I'm trying to think of the timeframe. We had the big flood out on Shores, and that was after '07, wasn't it?
2010.
Wasn't that in '10 or '11?
2010.
Okay. What, what has come about since then? Because we had, we were talking about, this used to be in my district back way a long time ago, but we were sending a lot of drainage to sinkholes. And, of course, things have changed since then on sending water to sinkholes and everything. And can you tell me what's, what's going on there? There was concerns with people on Shores at that point, and of course, after the big flooding and everything, everything that's happened, what changed this thing here and this design and, and the security? You mentioned all the lots are going to be out of the...
Right, right.
It's just not a, still a warm and fuzzy after what happened over there, so I was...
I can address that if you'd like.
Sure.
We have tried to avoid the major sinkhole features, if you will. If you look at the, kind of the middle section on the right-hand side of the concept, you'll notice that there's a large, any of them, you can look at page two or page six, they're all consistent. And if you look in, in the middle section on the right-hand side of the development, there's a large green area there. That is a very large sinkhole. We're leaving that in a natural state, keeping our lots off of that. We won't direct stormwater to that. We'll direct it to our detention ponds, and then from there, it'll be released to the stream itself. There's a couple of other features around the site that we've tried to plan around, to leave those in their natural state as well. If it's a small insignificant feature, then I would say we'll probably repair it like we do in several other occasions. But the large features, leave those alone and not direct stormwater to those. And our structure, that where we'll cross the unnamed tributary, we'll have to size it so it doesn't raise any flood elevations upstream or downstream from us.
Also, we've gone from 430 lots, so to speak, to six...
618.
But we've, you've added some more acreage, I believe.
Yes, sir. We, the previous plan only had one entrance off of Ocala Road, and we have since then put under contract several other properties on the western side of the unnamed tributary and added a secondary entrance into the property.
Off of Shores?
Off of Ocala.
Oh, off of Ocala.
Yes, sir.
Got two coming off of Ocala?
Yes, sir. And then we have a future stub to the west, to the north, and to the east. Now, those would obviously be dependent upon properties developed in the future. And, but to the north is, I believe that's Stewart's Farms. I could be wrong about that name. Maybe it's Stewart Creek Farms Development that is already underway, but has not gotten back to this point yet, so we would tie into that road there.
What is your timeframe on each phase for our young ones?
We, the first phase would ideally start about 120 days after the zoning is complete. That would allow us to get through the construction plans and the permitting phase. And then, so ideally, we would start roughly spring of 2015, and then possibly with the first houses being built in the winter, maybe the spring of 2016. And then everything after that would be market-driven. I mean, with 600 homes, you know, we would anticipate this probably to be a 15-to-20-year project, I believe.
Man, I'm not that, I mean, I know, I've been on that part of Ocala Road. It just dead ends farther down, does it not?
Yes, sir. Basically, I believe TDOT built that road because they created some landlocked parcels with 840.
But it does give me a little bit of heartburn, being that the only way in and out. I mean, a, a storm or something, a bad wreck blocks Ocala down here, and it could be 20 years before you get those stubs added out. So that does give me a little bit of heartburn, that many houses with one path for them all to follow. If there's somebody has, the highway department has to dig up the road or something, you got a whole lot of trapped people back there, you know?
Well, I think that's the good thing about stubbing to the north, the Stewart's Creek Farm, is hopefully that one won't be 20 years. I imagine Mr. Parks would, would hope not. But, and that's one reason why that all the improvements at Alma Ville, we've committed all those improvements in the first phase because it is the only way in and out. That could get overwhelmed pretty quick if we don't start that in the first phase. And our traffic engineer did run a preliminary calculation on the traffic signal, and she said that it, according to TDOT's current standards, that it would not meet, but she thinks it's a good idea to do that warrant analysis again at 75%, just to confirm that.
As you said, it is a big number, the number of lots, but that is, you know, the market's not going to absorb that many houses in two or three years, so it's going to be...
Gradual.
A long thing. And we could sit here and approve 50 houses on 25 acres in two more years, houses, or 100 more houses, and we'd be in the same place 20 years from now, but...
Yes, sir.
But it is a, it is a big number, but it would be, you know, there wouldn't be significant houses out there for four or five years, you know, with the, in the hundreds.
I think that's a fair statement.
Can you say 75%? The traffic analysis, is it 75%? Is that 75% of phase one?
No, ma'am. 75% of the overall development, and that, so that would be...
That could be 10, 15, 20, 21.
Yes, ma'am, it could.
Doug, what you was talking about, the CUD, these tanks in the front yard?
Yes, sir.
That's the issue. The, the footage right there with Miss Wood?
Well, it's more of the lot width is what the, the issue is. Not so much the depth, but the width of the lots in order to accommodate the driveway, the step tank setbacks from, you know, those, those items, the, the step tanks especially, the property lines. That, that's where that comes into play.
And we, we talked to Mr. Hughes about that earlier today, and we will obviously accommodate CUD as, as we need to. We wanted to build a little bit of flexibility, if we could, in case we're able to persuade them otherwise, but we'll obviously do what CUD requires of us there.
Matt, while you're at it, could you talk about the water line situation out there?
Yes. If you were on the planning commission with the original Cedar Brook, that plan was going to be required to extend a 12-inch main from the intersection of Old Shores and Ocala down to this property. Right now, this property doesn't have any access to public water whatsoever, and all the other homes along Ocala are own wells. With our property project, we will still be doing that extension. As, and with that, we have, CUD has studied the area and has given us two options. One, we can do that extension, and then do all of our improvements and build our water lines on-site, and put fire sprinklers if we have over, I think it's 400, the original 430 homes. If we stay at the 430 homes, we can do exactly what I just described with fire hydrants. Or if we want to do more than the 430 homes with fire hydrants and no sprinklers, we have to extend about a mile and a half of 12-inch line under 840 and to the south of us. So we're evaluating those options, which, which numbers work the best there. So we've got several options on fire protection for the property, but we know there's some significant improvements to be made regardless of what we choose.
I've got a question for Doug. The 75% buildout for the traffic study, could we not leave the flexibility with staff or the planning commission to trigger that sooner if more development happens?
get approved at that point.
He said that could be twelve, fifteen years...
It could be.
And we don't know what else is going to happen down that road, and we could be looking at significant traffic, and they're only half built out, you know, and then you get into the question of are they going to put a light up for whatever else went out there, but, you know, I still would want to have the flexibility to look at that sooner than seventy-five percent, I would think, but I may get, be getting ahead of myself.
And I think, I think what you alluded to would be our only concern is, if other people are generating some of that as well, then, yeah, I mean, obviously, some cost sharing there would be even more beneficial to us. I do know that the property to the east has some very significant development challenges and some topography and lack of suitable soils and things like that.
I remember seven years back, one of these developments out here was talking about pulling sewer all the way from Smyrna.
That, that wasn't this one.
That wasn't this one.
Yeah, that was, I think it was called Lynnwood, it was actually a little further up, it was, if you came across Burtonob Road back in that area...
I'm going to pull sewer several miles at one point in time.
Right, right, yeah, that, that was a different development, this was always going to be on a step system.
Our comprehensive plan has made it clear that this intersection here at Alma Ville Road is pretty prime for development, and I see a lot coming in there, and Ocala Road is a beautiful road, obviously built by the state to state standards, there's good sightlines. My big concern, though, is that last two hundred, or that first two hundred feet coming off of Alma Ville Road to Ocala Road, when Old Shores, there's nothing on Old Shores, it's a dead-end road, there's only one house. Has a chance, has there been an opportunity to develop some sort of better flow from that intersection of Ocala to Alma Ville Road?
I think that we've got some opportunities there, it looked like that TDOT has a pretty wide right-of-way there, so we could help, obviously, clear out the sightlines and try to work with some adjoining neighbors to try to come up some alternatives there, I mean, we'll definitely work with the county on that, as we develop our sur, full survey in that area and our construction plans up there, try to smooth some things out.
Hey, Matt, go back on the water explanation, the, the two plans, did they both entail laying a mile or more of twelve-inch, or did just one of the options?
Just one of the options, if, regardless of what we do, we have to extend a twelve-inch from Ocala and Old Shores to our property. And then from there, we have to, we have an option of reducing our number of homes to below, I believe it's four hundred and thirty, and their CUD could provide fire protection through hydrants without any sprinklers by just doing that. If we just do the twelve-inch, and we want to go over four thirty, we have to add fire sprinklers to that, to be able to provide fire protection. Or, if we don't want to do fire sprinklers, and we still want to stay over four thirty, we have to extend about a mile and a half back to the south under eight forty.
So, if you went over four thirty, i- if you were four thirty or less, you do hydrants. If down the road, you wanted to do four thirty-one, only from one, over four thirty, those have to be sprinkled?
No, I think it's, if we want to do over four thirty, we have to start sprinklering from day one.
Okay, so you have to declare before this gets really approved on what your intentions are, all right.
Yeah, we will have to let CUD know which direction we want to go when we get to the construction plan stage.
And, and then, if you want to hydrant the whole above four hundred and thirty, in addition to the initial twelve-inch line to Ocala, you'll have to do an extension to a new twelve-inch line that goes across eight forty. All right, if, if you, I'm, I'm asking, because I'm trying to look in the future, if you did that, do other properties adjacent or nearby you get benefit from that, or did, would they be in the same boat on their own down the road?
I think Ms. Wood will answer that, she actually ran those calculations and...
Jennifer Wood from CUD, Matt did an excellent job describing that, and it's actually four hundred lots, there's a four hundred lot limit, and so the four thirty-nine, and it's actually an upgrade, it's not an extension. So, we have a six-inch that runs from the intersection of Ocala Road south, the remainder of Old Shores Road, and it goes under eight forty, and then it connects back to Shores Road and goes back to the east. And what we have asked is if they would like to have those six hundred and, it was fifty for the request, so six hundred and eighteen with fire hydrants, they need to upgrade that existing six-inch to a twelve, which would include going under eight forty, which I was explaining to Matt earlier, that we actually do have a twenty-inch casing under eight forty, so they would just have to pull out the existing six and reload that with the twelve. So, they don't have to re-bore eight forty in order to make that happen.
If they had to do that, yes, per foot.
All right, Jennifer, would you go back to my question to Matt, if, if they did that and pulled out the six, slid in the twelve, is it just that property mathematically then that would benefit from that, or does property up and down the street?
So, what I took a look at was several different things, and I was analyzing this particular piece of property, and how I came up with that four hundred from the initial approval, was just looking at existing fire protection and existing customers, and if it negatively impacted those things. And so, we kind of got to that mid-orange level with a fire hydrants that are existing at that four hundred level, and I took that same approach when I looked at how far back that they would have to go to, to upgrade the existing six-inch to say a ten or a twelve, or what that would take to get us kind of back to that point, where we felt like that we are comfortable if a few other, maybe developments were to come in that area, we'd still be okay there, whoops, sorry, and we wouldn't have to do any kind of significant improvement. So, yes and no, those improvements are really just for this development, we don't have anything else kind of going on, we've got water down Shores Road, we've got water down Alma Ville, we just put a twelve-inch down Alma Ville Road in two thousand and twelve, basically, that gets to Ocala Road, but we didn't have anything and haven't had any requests south of there on shores. So, as far as currently, this development is really the only development that that will help. As far as future things, if we have another six hundred and fifty lot subdivision come in, we might have to reassess and reevaluate and see what they might have to do in order to make that viable, in order not to negatively impact the existing customers and existing fire protection, so, sure.
Touch on the part about the step system and lot size?
Sure, yeah, it's been probably a couple of months now, but we met with Doug and several others about the minimum lot widths and the setbacks for step subdivisions, we just, we've had one or two that I can think of subdivisions where the, the lots were really, really narrow, or the setbacks were really, really short, and that, we've just had a lot of problems with that in setting the step tanks, and really more so getting back in after they have been set, going back in and doing anything, sometimes we go in and pump those, or we have just things that fail, and we have to go in and we have to dig up somebody's yard, and so it just doesn't create a lot of room for us to go back and do that. So, we took a look at everything, when you're considering driveways, when you're considering electric, and the step tanks, and the meter, and the water line, and all those things that come into play for a subdivision, and that's kind of how we came up with the sixty-five foot, we actually met with SEC as well on that, and so we came up with sixty-five foot minimum width, thirty-five foot minimum setback without sidewalks, forty with sidewalks, and that's kind of what we've been rolling with for a little while now on step. And we had David Jones, our David Jones, who is over our set department, comment on that as well, and he was very comfortable with those numbers, so. That answer your question, Craig, on that?
It has to do with the placement of the step tank and the way it's formed.
It does, and the best way to put that in, as, according to David, is a certain way, if we have to turn the tank, it creates some problems to get back in there and to work on it, and some additional fittings, and it just creates some issues that we've seen in the field, and so to prevent that from happening, those are, those are the, the minimum setbacks that we need, and the minimum lot width that we need in order to make that happen.
While you're up there, as far as water, though, we've got the water, that's not an issue, it's just the line to provide that water...
There is water.
Needs to be a bigger, bigger line to access more water over there to the property.
So, the issue is a volume issue out there, so we have a twelve-inch, you know, water line down Alma Ville Road, like I was saying.
Right.
It just, at that six hundred and fifty lot with fire protection in the form of fire hydrants...
Yes.
That's where that upgrade comes into play.
Okay.
If they want to move forward with just four hundred lots and fire protection, they're good, if they want to go beyond that four hundred lots with fire protection in the form of fire hydrants, that's when that upgrade comes into play.
I understand, it's just some, certain areas of the county don't even have the water.
Right.
You know, potential to have it there, and all you've got to do is upgrade a line, they would love to have that option, but here, water's not the issue, it's just we've got to get more volume to them and...
We do, and the mile and a half, the eight thousand-ish feet that they would have to upgrade, that, the reason why that is so large of a number is because they have to go so far back to where we do have some volume to pull it back their direction, so that's kind of the issue with that. We have the twelve-inch we just put down Alma Ville Road, which really is kind of fed really just all the way down Alma Ville Road, there aren't a lot of loops in there, same goes for going down Shores Road, kind of getting back to the veteran, we've got big line coming on veterans that way to the east, and, and then to connect down to Shores Road and going west. So, we just have to go back quite a bit of distance to get back, they actually would be getting back to an eight-inch that we have on Shores Road, so it's just kind of doing away with some of that six-inch, which is a major killer whenever, when you're talking about trying to get volume to something, so, sure. Anything else for me?
Very eloquent, and I tried really hard to follow all of that, and I think I got most of it. Can they do hydrants up to four hundred and then convert to sprinklers after?
Sure, okay, so in the original approval that we did for them, we gave them kind of, I guess you'd say, three different options, the first option was to do four hundred lots with fire hydrants, the second one was to do the entire subdivision, six hundred and fifty, they could do, they could do fire sprinkler, and then the third option was to do a facilities improvement determination study, where we would look at what it would take in order for them to do six hundred and fifty lots with fire hydrants. So, that's what we did, and that's what I, you know, the, the upgrading, that's where that comes into play. So, we're kind of at that four hundred, it's kind of the cutoff, so if they want to go above and beyond that, there's still a sprinkler load that you have to consider, as far as going above and beyond that, would they be, be required, I guess your question is, would they be required to do fire sprinkler for just the two hundred and fifty or two hundred and eighteen?
Is there a hybrid combination?
It's, it's possible. I'm trying to think back, I think what I, the wording in the approval stated six hundred and fifty lots with sprinklers, did not, and I can certainly go back and take a look at that for... Yeah, sure, no, it's a perfectly reasonable question, I can go back and take a look at that. But the facilities improvement determination study definitely is explicitly states that to get to that six hundred and fifty, they would have to do that, so I'm kind of thinking in my mind, to go above and beyond that four hundred, they would have to do some upgrades if they want fire hydrants. I can go back and look at the sprinkler side to make sure that we're good to do a hybrid situation, if we did four hundred fire hydrants and two hundred and fifty with sprinklers, that that would still work fine.
That's just, that's just something that's personally important to me, whenever somebody's asking for a fire hydrant waiver, you know, I've never personally lived in a house with sprinklers, but I know fire hydrants work, so that was just why I wanted to know.
Sure, yeah.
Did I hear you right, Jennifer, when you said CUD wants sixty-five foot wide lots?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, I'm looking at this plat, or plan book, and it's saying fifty-foot wide lots, and just doing rough math, if you go from six hundred and eighteen fifty-foot wide lots and make those sixty-five foot lots, you've got four hundred and seventy-five lots. So, I, I don't know, before I vote on this, I kind of want some of this stuff ironed out, you know, I mean, we don't know how many lots we're going to end up with, we don't know how much, which way we're going on fire protection, and I don't know how, what kind of timeframe, you know, your developer's on, but it sounds like there's an awful lot of vagueness in this, and, and this is a big development, and I would like to have some of this ironed out, know what we're talking about, because if CUD is not going to budge on their sixty-five foot wide lots, you've got a problem.
Well, and we've said that we will go, and the lots that you see here, the six eighteen, we've actually drawn them as fifty-five foot wides, and, so there won't be as big of a drop, but we'll go, we'll do whatever CUD, I mean, if they're, if we can't get them to see our way, which, I mean, we will draw them as sixty-five, and we'll lose lots, so, and we know that, and we knew that when we drew these as fifty-fives, that the sixty-fives, we would just lose density in the end. As far as the fire protection, that's, you know, we will answer that question before we get to the construction plans, that's a, I mean, you can imagine that's a pretty significant number on the construction side, and so we want to weigh those options and run some numbers before we decide whether we're going to go a mile and a half offsite, or whether we just want to do sprinklers, would be our preferred option.
There are a few things in the, in our report from the staff, I'm just curious to know if you've addressed with them yet, and that is, it says that the stub out to the north does not line up with the current plan for the Stewart's Creek Farm subdivision, and that that had been communicated to you, and I was curious about that, and then also it says staff has asked for more detailed information regarding drainage for the proposed development, have we gotten that?
That was the floodplain issues, and they've addressed that.
And the stub to the north, whenever we were doing our plan, nobody could provide us with the current plan, so we kind of guessed, and we will move it to wherever that stub location needs to be, we just didn't know. So, the intent is there, we'll move it as we need to.
This question's for Doug, did you hear from central office, school?
No, we sent them the, we sent them the information, they acknowledged that they received it, I didn't receive any comments back from them on it.
What kind of comments would they typically make?
Typically, they just let us know what school zones they would be zoned for, and of course, now a development of this size, you know, as Matt said earlier in the presentation, could take fifteen, twenty years to build out, you know, totally, you know, during that time, there'll be more schools built, I'm sure, there'll be rezonings for those schools, so, you know, it's not like you're going to wake up one morning, you're going to have six hundred and eighteen lots plopped right there, but, but those are the typical comments that we would get from them.
Kelly, you want to run through your presentation really quick?
Sure, I'll...
About the types of buildings you're going to build and those types of things?
Sure, we, as Doug said earlier, we held a neighborhood meeting last, last week here in town, over at the Park Trust Realty Office on Northfield, we had about twenty to thirty people there, including all the design team, and most of the neighbors were, I would say, inquisitive, wanted to know about the project, but did not seem to voice a lot of concern, to me at least, and I think it was generally well-received. As Doug said, we are proposing about six hundred and eighteen lots on two hundred and sixty-two acres, that gives a density of just under two-point-four lots to the acre. We propose our lots a minimum of six thousand square feet in size, all of our homes will have two-car garages, concrete driveways, underground utilities throughout, our setbacks are thirty-five foot on the front, fives on the sides, and twenty-foot rears, with that five-foot side, we've said we'll have fifteen feet between the structures, though. We are preserving over fifty acres of usable open space, or open space not inside the step system, most of that space, as Doug said, was along the stream unnamed tributary, trying to preserve some of those natural areas that are down through there, and it's really making those more of an amenity... and it's, uh, really, uh, making those more of an amenity by some nature trails. We're not proposing to pave those. Uh, you get into paving, you have to, um, really start demolishing a lot of, uh, that natural that's already there, so we want to try to preserve that. But we are gonna put some benches along that trail, uh, for some seating areas, some signage, um, and, um, then in our more formalized open spaces, we're proposing a pool and pool house, a multi-purpose court where they can play, you know, tennis, basketball, um, several options there. Uh, we're planning several playgrounds ala- around the site, and then, um, then we're also gonna have some nice monumentation entry signage as you, uh, enter the site and have, uh, the walking trails come back out to Ocala there as well. The homes themselves will start at a minimum of 1,600 square feet. We anticipate those going up to, uh, 3,000 or more square feet in size. The fronts will be, uh, 90% brick, stone, or cement board of some kind, uh, with the sides being allowed in the vinyl siding. And all of our homes will have two bedrooms. Page eight shows you some examples of, uh, what we anticipate these homes to be, um, give some examples of architectural stylings, and, uh, we do anticipate most of these homes, um, being in the, uh, with a front entry garage at this point. Then the last page, page nine, gives you some examples of, uh, some of the benches and the pool house and playground that we anticipate doing here. It also, uh, details out, um, the amount of open space and, um, shows you, kind of highlights where that open space is, uh, in the green there. Other than that, hopefully I've answered all your questions. If not, I'll be happy to, uh...
I have a question.
Try some more.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
There, there's a large section at the beginning, the front of the property, right off Ocala, that is not part of your development?
Yes, ma'am.
Was that undesirable land or just unwilling seller or...
There, uh, there was a seller that wanted to keep that portion of his property. We, we are, actually do have under contract a part of his property, but it's on the other side of the creek, and I think he actually still farms this side. He has some structures and stores some equipment on the part that we're, we're not in, is my understanding.
Matt, I have a question.
Yes.
I'm on page five of the booklet. If you're coming, if you're coming off of 840...
Yes, sir.
You hit, what, you, the ramp turns into Ocala Road, is that right?
The ramp turns into Almaville, and then if you turn to the right, that's Old Shores, and then you hang a left onto Ocala.
Okay, so the, the Almaville exit ramp is that closest, um...
It's in the white.
Okay. Okay. So, it, when you're getting off 840, then, do, can you hit that exit or entrance on phase two, or is that behind the exit ramp? I'm a little confused on, when you get off the ramp at 840, is your only... Oh, and wait a minute. You're saying, you're saying that Ocala... All right, hold on. You confuse me a second. When, when you, when you get on, when you get on the ramp, off the ramp, you're actually tying into Almaville first, right?
Yes, sir.
And then you go up Almaville, turn right. Okay, so you don't, okay.
Yeah.
That, that line was confusing me.
Mr. Kush, yeah, if I can, I've got it on the screen here.
Okay.
This might help a little bit.
Yeah, yeah.
Is that pointer coming up? There we go. Well, I don't know how well it's gonna come up, actually, but, uh, it's hard to see, but...
That's not the ramp.
Yeah, no, that's not the ramp right there. This is actually Ocala Road in this area. The ramp is this right here.
I got you.
I guess it's the blue line. It's hard to tell again, looking at this. Correct, yeah. That's correct, yeah. There, there's a dead end here on Old Shores, and then there's a dead end right here. So, the ramp, this is the ramp coming off. This is Almaville Road right here, and then that's where you turn into Ocala, and I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Old Shores, excuse me, and then right here is Ocala. But yeah, this, it's all, kind of looks like it's all together right here, but these, there is no way to get from here from 840. There, there's no way to do that.
Okay. And you've already addressed the concerns in regards to that sharp turn then onto Shores and trying to correct that...
We're going to straighten out the intersection with, of, uh, Old Shores and Almaville. Right now, it's getting more of a Y. We're gonna make it into a T at 90-degree, and then, um, uh, we'll work as we, as we can. Uh, obviously, there's some private property, uh, right there at the sharp bend that we'll have to, uh, negotiate, uh, with that property owner.
And then in the future, if there were to be a light required, it would be at the Almaville-New Shores intersection?
Almaville and Old Shore, yes, sir.
Right here.
Ms. P just asked if that signal would cause problems with 840, and we've had our traffic engineer look at that, and she said with the improvements that we're planning there, um, we've got adequate distance from the ramp back to that intersection there. And I think that's part of the reason why that road ended up, how that intersection wound up where it was, T.D.O. wanted it that distance back.
Go back up to Veterans where, I don't know what road it is right there, when you get off 840 on Veterans, and it used to be, I don't know if that's Old Vaughn Road or whatever.
Mm-hmm.
It's right on top of it right there, and that's going, that's, that's a disaster waiting to happen. There's, there's a good bit of separation on this one.
Absolutely.
This one, I think, actually is, is in decent shape.
All right, Matt, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to sum up here. Yeah, yeah, okay. Well, let's do the public hearing first then. I'll, I'll refrain.
Thank you, Mr. Tyler, for your input. Um, stay close. Also, Jennifer, thank you for coming up. Any other questions or comments for staff before we conduct our public hearing? If not, at this time, we'll conduct a public hearing for item number 14-a013. Anyone wishing to speak for or against this rezoning request, please come forward. Anyone wishing to make a comment, please come forward. Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners?
All right. Matt, this is to you and really the rest of the body of the Planning Commission. And help me refresh my memory what I'm missing. It sounds like that, uh, the developer and the engineer need to decide some options on CUD, right? That's, that's one thing they have to do. It sounds like they have committed to street improvements at, or, or, well, maybe that's saying too much. They, they're looking at street improvements with the current landowner that would help the Old Shores, uh, turn and curve right there as it comes to Almaville. Is that right? Am I saying that correctly?
But, are you asking staff that?
But, yeah, yeah, right.
Well, I mean, I believe that's what he's doing, yes, but, I mean, we've made clear to him as far as the road improvements that the county expects to be made there.
And, and wh- what are we, what else are we missing? Wh- what's, what's the question mark left besides CUD and the street improvements?
Well, I think those are the big ones. Now, it, with C, right, the, the other one would be lot width. I don't know if you were lumping that in with CUD or not, but...
I, I kind of am. They, they have to...
Those are the three, I guess, those are the, the things, the, the three things that are still, I guess, uh, outstanding, for lack of a better word.
So, we'll, we'll add lot width. So, there's two things, CUD, they have to negotiate, uh, and then the street improvements, which may entail purchasing some land from a landowner to straighten out that curve, from what I understand. Is there anything else we're missing? As a gr- I'm asking the group. Are we missing anything else?
Doug, you made mention on here, on the comprehensive plan, that there were some inconsistencies that you had. Uh, do you still have those?
Are you talking about the staff recommendation?
Yes, sir.
You're talking about... Well, I think, uh, when we made these, when we made these comments and made the recommendation, some of the information that we were weighed on, we didn't have at that time. Now, we have received the information from Consolidated Utility regarding the options that are there to get the, the water line situation straightened out. Now, I do think, and I'd have more of a comfort level, quite frankly, if they had a course of action that they were going to pursue. Uh, if this were a traditional subdivision, I think that's one thing. This is a planned development. You know, there needs to be a little more detail on the front end. I was under the impression that they were gonna have that pretty much wrapped up by this point. Uh, I know either way will work. I think I'd be more comfortable personally if it were spelled out in here exactly which way they were going. Uh, the lot width issue, I know that there's a, uh, a difference of opinion, if you will say, between how much space they think is needed between the developer and, and possibly Consolidated. I think that's something that can be worked out, uh, between them, uh, either way, but I think, even though it may not have a, just a huge impact on the street network, uh, it may have an impact on how many lots they have. Now, generally with planned developments, uh, we do, uh, define what's considered a substantial or a major deviation or a minor deviation in a plan. Uh, generally, losing lots is not one of them. Uh, you know, that's usually considered a minor deviation. Now, if you're losing 100, 150 lots, okay, that may be a little, a little bit different. I don't know if that's really gonna raise to that level, but you can kind of see where that might cause a little bit of, um, hesitancy, you know, from the, the Planning Commission's standpoint. So, those things being worked out, I think, would go a long way into, you know, having staff with a more, giving us more information to make a recommendation on. You know, those were the things that we were, primarily the water line situation, that was really the big thing that kind of gave me pause before making a recommendation.
Doug, help me with the rules a little bit. Tonight's request is for a rezoning from RM to PUD.
Correct.
Now, with acceptance of that PUD, is it acceptance of the plan, or is it just acceptance of the zoning classification?
Well, this, part of the requirements for the PUD zoning is this pattern book that goes along with it, so everything that's in here becomes part of that zoning district in a, in a sense. So, whatever's in here is what they're agreeing that they're going to do, and that's what we'll be looking for as the project moves forward. So, I guess, answering your question, it's, yes, it's the plan itself, as well as the documentation in the pattern book as well.
Tyler, would you have something else?
I don't mean any disrespect to Mr. Tyler. He's been doing good work around here for years and stuff, but, uh, you know, if we're, we're either approving a subdivision of 400 lots or we're approving a subdivision of 618 lots, and we don't know which one we're approving, and we don't know how wide the lots are, and, and I don't think the county needs to weigh in on this dispute between the developer and CUD, you know, 'cause all of a sudden, we're endorsing 50-foot lots if we approve this, and then that's going up against CUD. I'd like to see that settle before we approve something that CUD is... All our other plaits require CUD and Middle Tennessee Electric's signature, where they've agreed. That's not done yet on this, on, on, on a regular subdivision plat, so, uh, with this out, that, I'll make a motion to defer this until our next meeting. We've had our public hearing already. So many people spoke, you know, it, we, I think we're okay. They won't want to speak again, and we can, and if, and if Mr. Tyler can have us some answers in two weeks, I think we can address this as our, we'd not have an...
We're not having any, yeah, it'll be next month.
We'll divert it till our ne- till our next meeting, and, 'cause I just think we've got too many variables in there, that's... So, my motion is to defer to the next meeting.
We have a motion to defer in a second. Mr. Tyler?
So, the answers that you want are the lot width and the number of lots are the ones that you're... The way, I, I guess, because the water, that may take us a while, because that's a big, that's a big number we've got to juggle around, and the way I'm looking at it is, CUD has said we have options there, and that sounds like a construction plan number or option or issue to me on the water protection, because they've said that we've got those options. And then, uh...
So, I don't think, I think you've gotta make that decision, but this is a PUD decision in our, our RM subdivision.
Personally, I'm gonna want a number of lots. I think that's, when you go to PUD, it sets this stuff in stone, and I think we need to know, you know, how many it's gonna be, and that's a, that's a huge variation.
Even though we've set a minimum and a maximum number, I mean, I...
Good variance, though. I don't remember doing it on a PUD, which is the difference between 400 and 618. That's 50%.
Right, and I would, I would agree with that, uh, Mr. Taylor, the, with, with what Mr. Jordan, Jordan is saying. Uh, if it were a traditional subdivision where you were bringing, you were just bringing us the, the master plan on the front end, the preliminary plan, you know, then as we work through the construction drawings and everything, you know, that's just how that process works. When you get with a planned development, you're being zoned for this many lots, this type of a layout, you know, it's a lot more specified at that point. Uh, I can honestly say, I've never dealt with a PUD that had a range of, where are they gonna do 450 or 400 lots, or we're gonna do over about 600, depending on how we work out the water. Generally, that's worked out on the front end, so...
All right. I'll get those up. Answers for you.
Matt, I don't, just to be clear, I'm not sure we're concerned about your choice A or B with CUD. I think the only thing we're really concerned about with CUD is your, whatever you guys hammer out on a lot width. We don't, we don't, I don't think we care if you sprinkle, you hydrant, or you hybrid, or you put in a two miles of 12 or a half. Uh, we don't care about that. Well, we, they may not have that in two weeks, though, or... I don't know that really matters, though, does it, Will? Why, why would it matter?
I'll be off in the weeds here, but that's the difference between 400 lots and 618. I mean, we need to know what we're approving here. Are we approving... Well, now, I guess you are. You're either gonna sprinkle or fire hydrate. Yeah, that doesn't, that doesn't change a lot, number of lots...
Right, right.
On that one, so, yeah.
Okay, so really, it's just a lot width.
We need a plat that CUD has signed, or, or, or something CUD has said, we will do this, and we don't have that at this point in time, you know?
All right. Thank you.
Doug and Chairman Phillips, we've had a public hearing. If we, if he could gather that information and, and have that before our next meeting in two or three weeks, can we go up or down then, or do we have to come back for another public hearing?
Well, just so everybody's clear, our next meeting will be about a month from now, uh, because we're not having our...
Because of holiday.
Because of the, the Thanksgiving holiday. We're not gonna meet the fourth Monday of this month. You, like you said, you have had a public hearing. If things don't really, if things don't significantly change, you know, if it, if they come back, they, they reached their agreement with CUD on everything, they come back, and it's pretty much the same development, just with a little more clarity, personally, I don't think that another public hearing is warranted at that point, because it's pretty much, you're pretty much looking at the same thing as you were looking at before. Now, if it comes back and it's changed, you know, they decided, well, we're gonna have to lose some lots, so we're gonna change the street network here, we're gonna lose a little bit of open space here, those kind of things, then I think you might want to have another public hearing at that point. Now, I will say this, and this is just from a historical standpoint. Historically, the Planning Commission has had a second public hearing on items they've deferred. Now, I don't think you're legally obligated to do that. Certainly, Mr. McCurry can, can chime in if he, if he doesn't agree with that, but that's just what you have done in the past. Now, that's, again, I don't think there's a legal requirement for that, but I know I'm kind of dancing around the subject here, but I just wanted to lay it all out there for you before you make a decision on how to move forward. But I would, from my standpoint, I would be comfortable if it's pretty much the same development, just with more clarity. Since you've had the public hearing here, I don't think you have to have another one at the Planning Commission. There will be another one at the County Commission anyway, 'cause this is just a recommending body at this point.
Right. Okay. Josh, do you have anything to say on that?
No, not. I think that's probably fine. I was looking...
I was looking at your, at the zoning resolution, because there is the section that talks about the process, and specifically talks about planning commission review and recommendation, and it mentions there being a public hearing before the planning commission, which you have now had. But under the law, under the statutes, you do not have to have a public hearing at the planning commission level, you only have to have it at the county commission level. So you've checked that box. Having said that, I do agree with Doug that if there are substantial modifications to the plan, then I think you need to have another public hearing so that if people have, want to have input on that plan, they would have adequate notice. So if these are modest, you're probably okay. I will mention, I don't think we're going to run into this, but the zoning ordinance also mentions that you will approve, deny, or approve with conditions within 60 days. So if something comes up and we don't have a meeting for some reason in 30 days, we better make sure this is on there so that we've covered that possibility.
And we are scheduled to meet in December, so I mean, I'm not, from a 60-day standpoint, that, that shouldn't be an issue, unless we have one of those free polar vortexes come down and bury us in 10 feet of snow, but I think we could make it work.
Can we defer this?
This application, this current one? No, this is the first time you're seeing this.
Yes, sir.
Thanks again, Mr. Taylor. After input from Doug, and, thank you, after input from Doug and then input from Josh, I'll remind everyone that the chairman sits the agenda, and I, I don't think you can ever go wrong by having public input. So if we have another meeting and it's deferred, we'll have another public hearing.
Is there any cost to advertise that above what we already do?
I mean, just the mail-out's the big one. I mean, that's, that's, and that's not, that's nominal.
Health and suspenders is never a bad idea, just do it.
We'll just, we'll just carry on as, as usual, then, normal procedure.
Thank you, Doug. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to defer for 30 days, and that will, I think, be heard at our December 8th meeting, if I'm not mistaken?
That'd be correct, yes, sir.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? The motion is to defer. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposition? That motion carries. Thank you. Item number nine B, various amendments to section 1405 of the zoning ordinance pertaining to rules and procedures for the Board of Zoning Appeals. The item number is 14-5004, and our planning staff is the applicant. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. This should just take just a moment or two to discuss, but when the zoning ordinance was adopted back in November of 2012, again, effective of January 1st of 2013, most of the rules and procedures that were found for the Board of Zoning Appeals were in their bylaws. We actually codified them in the new ordinance. We were recently looking at the BZA bylaws as part of our update for the work plan for this year, and while what was in the ordinance is pretty much what was already on the bylaws, we did find a few things that needed to be tweaked, a few things in the bylaws that were not included with the codified set, for lack of a better word, in the zoning ordinance. So really, what we're proposing here today is just to make sure that anything that was in the BZA bylaws originally is now in the zoning ordinance. So most of this is pretty straightforward. For instance, what you'll see here, and I've got the amendments on the screen, and you have them on your, on your packets as well, but the new text bolded and underlined, anything omitted, struck through. You'll see that under B, we added the word "membership," not just vacancies and removals. We added the line, "Members of the BZA had to be citizens of Rutherford County." Everything else here that you're seeing is pretty much unchanged. Meetings of the Board. We wanted to make it clear that the chairman can participate in all discussions and shall vote as a member of the Board. We also wanted to add some language in there in the event that the chairman and vice chairman were not present, and what procedure had to be followed at that point. If a quorum was present, then they just nominate a chairman pro tem for that meeting. That doesn't happen very often. It only happens really, it's only happened to the planning commission one time that I can remember, but I don't know if it's ever happened at the BZA, but wanted to put that in there just for, for clarity. Going on, under number five here, again, this is rules and procedures of the Board. All matters voted on by the Board shall be put in a form of a motion by one of the Board members and seconded by another. Again, we were just putting this in there for more clarification. Motion can be amended in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, and the chairman shall conduct the voting by asking either for a roll call or a voice vote, as deemed appropriate by the chairman. Again, most of this is unchanged. We added, add a couple of things here. When parliamentary matter arises, it's not covered by the bylaws, we just defer back to Robert's Rules of Order. This is the deferral policy that was added to the bylaws, it was not added in the zoning ordinance. This is just saying that it's a policy of the Board that any request to defer, they're consideration. Now, we're not talking about when the Board, like in this situation here, where the planning commission just deferred something, we're talking when the applicant comes to us and says, hey, we want to defer this for 30 days because we can't make it to the meeting, something like that. We have a similar language to this in our bylaws. Basically, they can go, they can do that for up to three months, and after three months, if for some reason they still can't, the application dies, for lack of a better word, and they have to resubmit fees and everything. We added that in there. Again, this is not a recurring problem, but on the planning commission side especially, we had a few applications, just were kind of sitting out there, and were there for months and months and months, some of them years. And so we put something in there, said, okay, that's all well and good. If you go three months and the Board still hasn't considered it, the application is, is no longer exists, you have to reapply at that point. So we just added that in there. Your agenda material says section 1405 of the zoning ordinance for amendments. There's also one in 1406, so you're, we'll make sure that that's clarified at the Board of Commissioners meeting, but all it is, is one change of wording here. It says, "The final disposition, disposition of any appeal to the Board of Zoning Appeals shall be in a form of a resolution." The BZA doesn't do resolutions, they do orders of action, so we just changed that verbiage. That's really it. These, we consider these really more housekeeping in nature than anything. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for staff?
Need to have a public hearing first. Sorry.
No other questions or comments, so we're ready for our public hearing. And at this time, I'll declare a public hearing open for item number 14-5004. Anyone wishing to speak for or against, please come forward and state your name. Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed. Steve?
Just did three.
Thank you. Motion to approve in a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye. Any opposition? That motion carries. Thank you. Staff reports or other business? Let me remind everyone that our Friday morning meeting, scheduled for the 24th of this month, has been canceled. Our next meeting is scheduled for Monday, December the 8th, 6:00 p.m. here at the courthouse. And prior to that, we'll have our annual Christmas dinner at 5:00 over in the planning office, and Gail will be sending out some information for a potluck, so put that on your calendar, too, if you would.
Gail, station at the memo, right, in turn?
Yes, yes, yes. And Gail, send out that memo as well.
We can take that, yeah, we can make that happen.
And once again, that will be at 5:00 prior to our 6:00 meeting on December the 8th here. Doug, you have anything?
No, sir, I had nothing further.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Thank you for your attention. Can, can, can we do this?
I can, well, I mean, I can, I can get with you after the meeting, if that's, if your question, okay.
Can I do it? Josh?
I don't know if they're going to ask.
I mean, I...
I don't either, that's the reason I'm asking.
I recognize him, I don't, I don't think it's part of the meeting at this point, because there's no public hearing or anything going on.
What was Tyler, that was supposed to be here? For water, power, I don't know, I don't spend that long. I said we had to come here.
I'll, I'll talk to you after the meeting, I'm sorry.
Come forward after the meeting is over with, and we'll talk, okay? Anything else? Happy Thanksgiving. We're adjourned.